Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Washoe County Chambers. We are honored to have all of you with us this bright and sunny morning. We haven't seen the sun in quite some time, so it's exciting to see that. So, I'm going to call the order of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 28th, 2017. At this time, Mr. Listener, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Listener. All right, Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Certainly. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Berkshire Bergbegrler.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeannie Herman is absent. County Manager, or Acting County Manager David Solero.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Paul Leparelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, at this time, do we have any public comment? Item three. Mr. Manager, would you?
Absolutely. Public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commissioner's agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have a comment?
First up this morning is Chief Judge Patrick Flanagan from the Second Judicial District Court. I believe he's going to introduce some canines to you.
Marvelous. Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, Bob Lucy. Mr. Chair.
Good morning, sir. Just wait until I get some way out there.
Yeah, can we move that mic down for him? It should pull, there should be some cord, extra cord length.
The District Court considers itself not just a separate branch of government, but a partner. Partner in the government. And in that vein, last year, we had some money in our budget, and we realized that one of the most important partners we have is the Washoe County Sheriff. And the impact that their canines have in our family court and our general jurisdiction cannot be overstated. They are truly transformational. You'll see heightened tension dissipate once a dog, a canine, a trained canine comes into the picture. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the stars of the show. We have Kiago and Speed step forward.
Good morning. If I could just take a couple of minutes of your busy time, because we don't get to come see you very much. It's great when different agencies within the county -- They are a little toy hard. They really like their toys. It's great when different groups can come together so well. One of the things is, we were at a time where we were down some dogs, and we needed some monies to get some dogs. Just so, real quickly, all these dogs come from Czechoslovakia, and they ship into Indiana, and they're paired with our handlers. We send the handler out there. The dogs know what to do, but we actually get the handlers to learn what to do. And it's an expensive proposition. But with that, these dogs come back and are immediately at work. These dogs, once they were certified, within weeks, they were out there doing drug sniffs and different things like that. They've been very successful. Unfortunately, as Your Honor and I had discussed, we can't make very public a lot what our dogs do. They're very much involved with federal agencies and everything else. But just some numbers, very quickly. We've had over $600,000 worth of drug seizures this year so far, and hundreds of pounds of both methamphetamine, cocaine, opioids, and marijuana. So, understand, they're out there working. I wish we could show pictures and attaboys for them, and we truly appreciate being able to keep them calm in public. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much for your support. Truly appreciate it.
Deputies, can we get a picture with the dogs, the new recruits, with the judge as well?
Sure. Judge, you're on.
[dog barking]
We'll do Kiago first. Uh, we'll try.
You tell me where it might land.
Right in the back. Yep. Anywhere else where you do would be perfect.
Should we pet him there?
Kiago's very pettable. Just remember, they've only been in country for a little while. They've never seen cars. They've certainly never seen the city.
I don't speak Czech.
Yeah, I do don't speak Czech. We don't speak Czech. Maybe just a picture with Kiago first, please. Yeah. Yes. Just around 30,000 by the time you're done. All right?
Okay, here we go. Going, three, two, one.
Kiago. Look up here, Kiago.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Yep, I got it.
Look at Speed.
Speed's a little high drive. Go ahead and pull Kiago out that way.
So are we.
Keep going. We'll take this one this time.
So many choices, so little time.
Speed's our swat dog, so he's not bothered. He gets very calm with loud noises.
Which one of the Commissioners is it?
Bob.
Go ahead and spin him out. Down. 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 Over here. Over here, down.
This works.
Beat him.
Media people?
You can do it.
Well, we're going to make this work.
We're going to make it work.
Hooch. Ziz. Ziz. Kmatz.
Wait a minute, my toys aren't there. That's German, that's not Czech.
All right. So. Speed is a multilingual. Go ahead.
It's right in here.
All right, here we go. In three, two, one. There you go. Great photo.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, boy, toys.
Can I just stay down here? [inaudible]
Yeah. Come on. Yep.
That's not fair. [inaudible]
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for being, understanding with a little extra time there. And Judge Flanagan, thank you very much for coming and making that presentation for us this morning. And Washoe County Sheriff deputies, thank you for all the time you put in with those animals. They are not only a vital service to our safety and public safety here, but it's a wonderful program that you guys take on. So, thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk. Next, public comment, please.
There we go. Nathan Daniel, and he'll be followed by Tammy Holtstill.
Good morning, Mr. Daniel. Thank you for being patient.
My pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Acting Manager, and the rest of the hardworking staff. I'm Nathan Daniel. I'm the Director of Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, and I'm also a member of the Regional Open Space and Parks Commission. So, I'm here today to read an abridged version of a letter that the Open Space and Parks Commission has written to you to address the lingering and serious underinvestment we believe is happening in our parks today. So, here's the letter. Dear Washoe County Commissioners and County Manager, the Washoe County Open Space and Regional Parks Commission respectfully requests a 7% increase above the cost of living adjustment for the upcoming fiscal year operations and maintenance budget. As your primary advisory body for issues related to parks, the Washoe County Regional Parks and Open Space Commission is writing to encourage reinvestment in our public parks. Last year, the Commission wrote to push for a modest increase in park budgets. However, we saw no substantive increase in park funding. This year, our goal is to again highlight the fact that well-maintained, high-quality parks provide essential services to all residents in Washoe County. We appreciate that your recent strategic plan, you highlighted an increase in the county's support for outdoor recreation, including parks, trails, and open space. As a primary roadmap goal, we agree that reinvesting in our parks should be a primary means to elevate our quality of life, allowing our community to thrive. The Parks Commission believes that by continuing to neglect these vital public spaces, we are doing ourselves a disservice. As we continue to see county revenues rise at around 7% per year, the Commission is respectfully requesting a 7% increase in the next year's budget. Despite the economic recovery, the 2016-17 parks budget remained at 57% of pre-recession levels. And I just want to take a second there and reiterate that the current year's budget for parks is only 56% of what it was in 2007. So, that's difficult to wrap our heads around, I think, as a community, but it's the reality. So, anyway, this disinvestment has resulted in the general deterioration of some of our parks and open spaces. And while staff continue to perform admirably, these limitations on personnel and supplies make it difficult in providing services to the citizens of Washoe County. As you consider the coming year's budget, please consider the economic health and social benefits provided by our parks. The Commission believes an investment in our parks is an investment in the future of Washoe County, and as we move deeper into this exciting period of development, it is essential that we think about our public parks as drivers of economic growth and appreciate them for their environmental and community health benefits. In order for Washoe County to move to meet its economic potential and prove that it is a region that values high quality of life, we need to increase Parks and Open Space Division's budget from its current unsustainable levels. Considering the importance of the things we just outlined, the Commission strongly recommended a 7% increase in the fiscal year 2017-18 OIM budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Mr. Daniel has provided me with a written copy of his comments, which I will put on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next up is Tammy Holtstill. She also provided me with some documents, and I will provide them to you. And Ms. Holtstill will be followed by Sam DaNae.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Still.
Hello again, Commissioners. I am Tammy Holtstill. Sorry I was not able to be here last Tuesday, but I do know you did receive my email, and I did ask that it be read in last week's meeting, with no response from you. I stand before you again today, asking why there is no action from you, Washoe County, or the state of Nevada on your behalf. There has been no changes in Lemonett Valley. In fact, there is even more dangerous because of the lack of action. The water, as you know, as stated by John Slater in a newscast, is only going to rise higher because of snowmelt or another storm. Besides, there is only one access point for emergency services like fire and ample. Putting up road closure signs and using Washoe County crews to deliver door-to-door in Lemon Valley a notice dated February 24th about the flooding, not even knocking on the doors to check if the residents' well-being as they are doing so, is a total waste of manpower and lots of money. We told you we were flooding. We told you back in the 1st of January, homes have lost septic tanks and wells. What did you do? Nothing. The money spent for your crews to do so little could have given the residents porta-potties, fresh water tanks, and also heated showers stalls. No, you wasted time and money and paper, manpower, vehicles for nothing. Then, to lie to News4 Joe Hart last night, saying you have done everything you can do, and you have knocked on every door in Lemon Valley, is a factual lie. K O L O has proof of this lie. And yesterday, I walked down to check on my neighbors to find out they are in the same or even worse condition than they were before. Really? Even after you've been out there? Then, as I am going back to my home, two women in a government vehicle plate came through the blocked area. I asked what they, you know, I stepped aside and I asked what they were doing. They said they were social workers, and they were out there to check on the residents. At that time, they had been three-quarters of the way through the blocked area and had not gotten out of their car. They did not get out of their car until after I questioned them why they had not. This is not right. You should be ashamed of yourselves and the county. I am. Churchill County has not only looked to the present, they are looking at the future and have already acted to preserve their residents' well-being. You have not. It is a shame. You violated your own codes building out there the way that you did. So, get off your assets, quit lying on your lulls, and do something now. People need porta-potties. People need showers. People need fresh water to do things that they can do.
Thank you.
Sam DaNae, followed by Michael Welling.
Good morning, Mr. DaNae.
Good morning. Sam DaNae, that's me, the encyclopedia of Reno government. Sam D N A DaNae. Sam, that's me. I'm the heart, soul, body, and mind of Reno area government. I've done more for the community than all of the other citizens added together. I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno. The 92% of the bad things about Reno, the responsibility belongs on the media mouses, the evil media mouses. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the borders and outside of the border. And I've found that we have as many enemies inside of the borders as outside of the border, maybe even more. I say I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno, and I want, you've got about 50 people in the room here. Some have been here before, some are new people. Does anybody up back there? I see an important former city council lady there, and some gurus. Do any of you want to come down here and say Sam DaNae is not responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno? Come on down here. You've got three minutes to challenge it. Nobody ever does. Here, I'm even kind of like challenging you to challenge me, but anyway, maybe it's only 91%. I saved Burning Man when they wanted to shut it down. I was a driving force that brought Tesla to Reno, and you can ask Colonel Kazmiersky, he knows it. He came here, and he's the only person in town who's ever had the gumption to even thank Sam. But now we've got, now we've got, and I would be the most famous, popular, notorious person in this community if it wasn't for the most evil thing in all of America. Trump says, Trump says the media is evil. Well, the Reno media mouses are more evil than what Trump even says. You know why? Because Trump's media is not scared of Trump. They don't even talk about him. The Reno media is so deathly scared in their pantyhose of this 160-pound senior citizen, retired fighter bomber pilot, that they won't even write, the invisible, the invisible media is what we've got in Reno. Scared to, how can they possibly sit back there and take this castigation and not want to write something and say, Sam needs therapy? Or anything? No. Sam is clever, he's extemporaneous, and brilliant ideas. And the last thing, I was the driving force that brought medical marijuana to Reno, but we've got to do something about it? The drug testing is out of control. It's archaic. It's old, and people are being busted when they're more sober than the judges busting them. You've got to do something about the archaic drug testing cartel.
Thank you, Mr. DaNae.
Michael Welling, followed by Kathy Brandhorst.
Good morning, Mr. Welling.
Good morning, and thank you for your time today. I'm Michael Welling. I live in, in the North Valleys, up in the Red Rock Developments. I'm here today to bring to attention some concerns that I have about the Silver Hills development. I know they're asking only for an extension today, but since they received their permitting five years ago, there's been two major water events in our neighborhood. And prior to that, there've been, since '97, there's been four major water events in the northern Nevada area. And to my understanding, we live in a 100-year floodplain. So, in 20 years, we've been able to do the things that they say take 100 years to happen. Four times, we've done that. My concerns are over the displacement of the water in the area, and how they intend on keeping the water from invading our, some of our properties there after building. And most of all, I'd like you to consider the idea that, after conversation with Mr. Lloyd, he assured me that, you know, there'd be more time and more ability to discuss the items that will come to the forefront as we move on. And what I'm asking is that the water issue be at the forefront of what's going on here in light of things that are taking place these days. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Welling.
Kathy Brandhorst, followed by Juanita Cox.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, escaping from prisons, escaping from jails is not working. They're escaping out of the jails, they are escaping out of the prisons. They're not there, even though they got 152 years in prison, even though they got 52 years in prison, but they're sitting here. And I just wanted to let you know that this is not justice. This is a horrible thing to go through while you're still carrying your guns, shooting innocent people down. I still live at the Donner Motel, and the reasons are your reasons, because you keep me from finding a place to live, no matter how you look at it. I just wanted to let you know, even though you chop heads over on that property at the Donner Motel, you're still not innocent. You are the murderers at that motel. You always lie. You're liars. And I know you are liars, because you don't even say who you are. You don't even say what you've done. But you are already in prison. You have been destroyed, because you don't stay in the prisons. You don't stay in the jails either. So, what are you doing here? You don't even belong here. I went to Good Shepherd to get my clothes. And who are you, thrown out of the Good Shepherd? You're on death row. You don't belong here. You're already dead. You're deceased. You're no longer alive. So, what are you doing here? They throw you out. You are arrested by the police department. You're not supposed to be out of jail, but you are. You're all out of jail. You are supposed to be in jail until court comes up and tells, and the judge says what you are going to be. Destroyed. You don't stay in prison. You don't stay in jail. Why are you doing this to our area? This is Reno, Nevada. It's not your territory. We've never seen any of you before in our area at all. I don't know where you're coming from. I don't know where you've been, but you're not from this area at all.
Juanita Cox, followed by Lee Grzeszkich.
Good morning, Ms. Cox.
Wow. Good morning, Juanita Cox. For the record, speaking for Citizens in Action. You've got something coming up, and that is, the Nevada Humane Society is very concerned with exotic animals, and so am I. I think we all have a right to have animals that will not, will satisfy ourselves, but not harm the community. That's why we have, personally have insurance to cover that. I feel that the government is a little out of their league of trying to do this exotic animal information, regulations now, and I will hopefully be addressing it later if I'm not at the legislature. The second thing I have is fluoridation. Fluoridation is rearing its evil head again, and it will be at the legislature again, but this time, it's for Washoe County. I want to remind you that if you put toxic poison into the river, it is a federally protected river with federally protected fish. So, that will cost Washoe County millions and millions and millions of dollars. But it's, the figures that they're coming up with, with tamua, is only a minute amount compared to what it will be when you start addressing the drainage that comes out without, that doesn't go through the sewer plant. So, this is just a warning, just a heads-up, that this is coming down the road. And I'm having a seminar this Saturday, 6 o'clock, Denny's and Sparks, free to the public. Come and listen to what we have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lee Grzeszkich, and then followed by Tina Pope Grzeszkich, and I'm hoping you're going to tell me how to really say that name.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. It's Grzeszkich.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for my voice. I've got a virus. I am Lee Grzeszkich. I live in Silver Knolls, and I'm a board member of the Silver Knolls Mutual Water Company. My wife Tina's speaking next. She's currently the president. We've been a sovereign company in Silver Knolls since 1979, and this new development is slated to be built around, over, and on top of our facilities. We reached out to Lifestyle Homes when the first maps came out back in 2006, and I realized the recession put everything backward, you know, took everything a step back. But we're still there, and we do need to cooperate with this development going forward, or we're going to be impacted. Couple of the items that we need to discuss is, the development is approved to be built over the top of our main well and the piping that goes to our pump house. So, we want to make sure that those are protected, along with the recharge areas for our wells. We'd like to remain a sovereign company. We realize tamua hookups are coming to this development. We'd like to maintain our sovereignty. Currently, we supply water to the Washoe County Park in the area, and that's been a challenge for us, because in the summertime, the park pumps a lot of gallonage, and that draws our well down, which causes our arsenic levels to rise. We've, we got a, we got a grant from the federal government to install arsenic filters, and it's been a challenge to get those running. We had a meeting with the Bureau, the State Bureau of Safe Drinking Water a couple of weeks ago, and James English and Wes Rubio from Washoe County suggested that going forward, they would want to see a plan for us to put the park on our backup well. We drilled a backup well in 2000 to help, to give us some relief from our main well, but it turned out we have, the water quality is not that great for drinking, and we haven't been able to filter it. So, we would like to get the park on the backup well. Currently, they're our biggest customer. We'd like to remain that, but it would require some construction from Washoe County and a design of a system to get our backup water to irrigate the park. We also have some other, some other issues with the roads out there behind our house, the road going into the park. Currently, it runs across Lifestyle Homeland and then hits the park, and we've had trouble getting county support for that, because there's a he-said, she-said, well, it's private land, it's county land, and currently, the runoff from the road is coming down through our property and causing flood damage, and we'd like some relief with that as well. And that's on a personal note, not for the water company. So, thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you guys as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Grzeszkich.
Tina Pope Grzeszkich, followed by Tim Stoffel, and then Joanna Schumacher.
Good morning, Ms. Pope Grzeszkich. How are you?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My husband pretty much covered everything, a lot of things that I would say.
Could you state your name for the record?
Oh, state my name. Tina Pope Grzeszkich.
Thank you.
Anyway, the park is a horse park also. We have a horse arena right behind our house. It's not level. It's, you have to run your horse down a hill and then back up a hill, and this is inside the arena. Now, I heard that there was going to be an enclosed arena brought in to Silver Knolls Park, and I was wondering if that was going to happen. I heard Bob Listener was going to bring it to us. So, it was going to go into the park, the green part of the park, the acreage that's being watered, and there were And they were going to set it there, but there's a kiddie park right next to that, and I was wondering how parking was going to be done. There's, there would be a lot of tearing up of that park to be able to do that. And so, I had some questions about that, but I can, I can wait on those. Also, the flooding, I wanted to mention, the flooding off that property, the park property and the Listener property, has absolutely destroyed my backyard. For 30 years, I have called the county and written letters to have something done about that park road, for 30 years. And I get laughed at, I get told to go to hell, I get told a lot of things, but I don't get told that that will be fixed. A culvert, a good dig to take the water in a different direction would be really good. But it has affected nearly every house on Big Horn. So, and like I say, my husband covered almost everything, so thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Stoffel, followed by Joanne Schumacher.
Good morning, Mr. Stoffel.
Good morning, Mr. and Ms. Commissioners. Tim Stoffel, 10515 Trail Drive, Reno, Nevada. And an involuntary taxpayer through my property taxes. I want to talk to you again this morning about exotic animals. Couple of years ago, this commission charged Animal Services with going to the ordinance and bringing it up to match state NRS and to clarify the language that was in there. What we found that Animal Services has done is they have gone way beyond that, added all sorts of new terms, restrictions, classifications, and stuff like that, just basically designed to repress not only exotic animal owners, but really animal owners of all stripe. This is something that we have been talking to you about a lot, and although there's been some improvement on these issues, this is all seeming to come to a head. Now, we have just recently learned that the state is now taking on this issue, and they're going to probably make some changes. We are going, hoping that these changes that they are proposing will not end up being the changes that actually happened, because they're just as bad. And we intend to make sure that, do everything in our power to make sure these things change. But at the end of the day, we're probably going to have a different set of rules to follow here than we have now. So what's the point of pursuing this action at the county level if everything at the state is about to change? So I'm respectfully asking this commission to direct Animal Services to back off on this regulation and stuff until we see what happens at the state, and we have time to be able to deal with this in a serial manner, rather than trying to deal with two different bodies that are going to end up probably conflicting with each other. And secondly, I was touched this morning, and I saw this commission come out and spend some time with a couple of dogs that were imported from Czechoslovakia here. And it's obvious that the commission and the county has a great deal of respect for these dogs, and what they do for us and our services and stuff like that. They went to a great deal of trouble to import them from a foreign country. What I'm asking this commission to do, and this county to do, is show us exotic animal owners, the thousands and thousands of different species of animals that we passionately care for as much as those police officers do, that you show us the same degree of respect that you show the police dogs as well. Thank you very much.
Joanna Schumacher.
Thank you, Mr. Stoffel. Good morning, Ms. Schumacher.
For the record, my name is Joanna Schumacher. I'm actually here under two different organizations. My first organization, Stoffel just said. We've been looking at the exotic animal issue. It's a, our group is a bipartisan group. And in, in discussing this and researching it, we find that the only way that, especially some of our poor children, including my nieces and nephews and several of my group's children, have ever been able to see any exotic animals, is because of the, of the ability of these smaller organizations to have a zoo. And many of them have gone out to the zoo in Red Rock. So it's important that they have the chance, especially these low-income children, to be able to see these animals up close and personal. And you can't get that from a stuffed animal. It has to be a live animal. There's something that touches your soul when, when that happens. So we would definitely ditto what Mr. Stoffel has said. Now, my second organization is, I'm the president of the first Nevada unit of the National Association of Parliamentarians. We are a nonpartisan group of men and women who are parliamentarians or just people who want to know more about Robert's Rules of Order. First, we want to thank you for following Robert's Rules of Order, the newly revised version here at the commission. It's a way of running a meeting that truly allows the minority of one to be heard, and the possibility to persuade those other people, while allowing the majority not to be held hostage. We would like to ask that you put that fact, that you are using Robert's Rules of Order, on your website, so that it would encourage people to do research and to have a better understanding of how our commission operates. And they could also seek information from not only our organization, but several others that are out there on the websites. And for each of you to know, our organization is able to assist anyone in your district. Should they like to learn more, you can direct them to our organization. And again, we want to thank you for using Robert's Rules, because we hear all the time from groups who come before us and that we train, how fair and understandable the basics of running a meeting are when you use Robert's Rules of Order. So again, we'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment I had sign in, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we'll bring it back to the board at this time. Mr. Manager.
Chair, that takes us to item number four, Commissioners, County Managers, Announcements, Reports, and Updates. Requests for information or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have any updates at this time?
I do have one. We do have an emergency item that we'd like to add to the agenda after item number 15. It's an emergency item regarding the state of emergency declared by the Washoe County Manager on Thursday, February 23rd, 2017.
Thank you. All right. So I'll start to my left. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan Daniel was here to talk about Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation. I wanted to let the board know and the community. I used campaign money to become a lifetime member, which was $1,000. I challenge all of you to do that as well. They have done some really impressive work with the student scholar program. They actually identify schools that do not have the money to afford a bus ride to go on field trips. Some of these children have never had a field trip in their life. And so instead, they go to parks near their schools, like Bernice Smart Matthew School is next to Paradise Park, and they do real science and data collection, and then supply said data to UNR, and many other things. So I wanted to let you know that I'm also proposing for the next fiscal year that I give 5,000 of my discretionary funding for Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation. And I did this a couple of years ago, and this is for staff to do the Truckee Meadows Parks Challenge, that their entrance fee would be paid then, so that staff can go ahead and go do that. And I do support, again, what Mr. Daniel said about the open space in regional parks budget. I think we should be increasing our operation and maintenance budget this year by at least 7%. Vis a vis the information that was provided, how much we've been cutting that. Also, if staff could look into, there was a couple here that live out in Silver Knolls, and they have trouble with, can we just get an update with the parking and who owns what at the, at the park out there? So we can get that straight for them. I know that the emergency item that we have on our agenda today is specifically to address if whether or not we could get some funding from the state, if the governor would indeed declare Washoe County as well as a disaster area to help the folks out in Lemon Valley, which by the way, I was just out there this morning to take a look at. And the, the water is not receding, and it appears, Mr. Salaro, that with the change in weather, we're going to have more melted water, and, and we need to have an action plan out there for these people. I don't know how they're, how they're maintaining themselves, because when I even looked at it today, I went to a friend's backyard to look at where, you know, really, what does the water look like and where is it usually at? It's, it's definitely a disaster area. And anything we can do, vis a vis the requests they made, I know their commissioner isn't here, that's why I'm bringing it up, Mr. Salaro, porta potties, hot showers, portable water. I mean, at least get tamoa on that. They did a great job for us out in Shurs when they had absolutely no water. They worked all night to bring water to us, with different private companies as well, and that was through the Board of Health. Let's see. Open Space and Regional Parks meets on Tuesday, the 7th. I will be there as your new liaison to them. Also, the senior services, Washoe County Senior Services Advisory Board meets tomorrow. I will be there as well at 3:00, as their, your new liaison to them is that board. And I believe that the chairman, Lucy and I, will be on the 2nd of March at the Capital Funding Protection Committee for the school district. You're on that with me, right?
Yes.
Yes. So that's our, it'll be our first official meeting since the tax, and our first blessing, I guess, to their first project, since the sales tax passed to increase capital funding for building new schools and taking old schools and putting them in better repair. So your chairman and I are one of the many that are overseeing the school district as another set of eyes. I did ask that that board start meeting here and be televised. And Mike Kate, who is the chair of that board, didn't feel comfortable doing that until we met as a board, saying, "Are you okay if we then start meeting here in these chambers?" But I think it should be on TV. I know they said they can do it from TV from the, the school board room. It's terrible, nobody can hear, nobody can see. So I will be pushing that we start meeting back here as well. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, like Commissioner Jung, I have some concerns about this park issue in Silver Knolls. It's the first I've heard about it, and the problem with flooding and flooding private property. So I'd like to have a report from staff on that to, to the commission, so that we have some idea of what's going on there, and if there's something we can do to fix it. Additionally, out in Lemon Valley, I received a, an email, which some of the rest of you commissioners may have received, from a Mr. Strobel, who is concerned about the traffic, the speed of traffic on the, on the side streets, where the traffic is being routed off of the main drag, and that people are not slowing down, and that maybe if we put lighted signs out there... So I, I'm sure you guys have probably already had that brought to your attention, but I, I think that's something we really need to look at, because this, as Commissioner Jung pointed out, this problem's not going away soon. You know, the water's going to keep rising, because the snow is, is melting. And that is a wetland, it's a designated wetland, a FEMA wetland. And so we, we've got to do everything we can to try and resolve the problem. And I know, because I had the opportunity to talk to Dwayne earlier, that there was a helicopter trip out there over the area yesterday, and we had, and we had state people with us. And so they are taking a closer look at it and understand the problem out there. And hopefully, we will get some FEMA funds, we're hoping, to do some of the stuff that needs to be done out there. So just as, if, if you would keep us apprised of what's going on, might be a good idea to keep this on the agenda. Each agenda, so that there's always a report on, where are we on Lemon Valley? And how, what are we doing for these citizens and that kind of thing? I know that there's not, there's, there's not as much that we could do as, I know some of the citizens would like, but there are things we can do, so we really need to work on that. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burke Bigler. Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would certainly be happy to reach out to tamoa in regards to water trucks. And I'm fairly certain that we can probably get the porta potty, you know, the sanitation company in town to give us some assistance as well. With respect to the speeding, Commissioner Burke Bigler, I, I actually forwarded that email and took the liberty on that day, excuse me. It's going to go. Again, it still isn't gone, my voice. I took the liberty that day to forward it off to not only our staff, but to the SO, to Russ Peterson. And so they are aware of it, and they were going to try to increase the patrols in that area. With respect to Lemon Valley, it's a tough, it, it's hard to make those rising waters go away, because there is no place to put it. So it is something that I know that we will be discussing at the Flood Management Authority, if there are ways that we can assist those residents, some of the same ways that we've assisted some residents in Hidden Valley. Now, there may be an opportunity there, I don't know yet. We'll just, we'll have that discussion. I'll ask it to be an agenda item on the Flood Management Board. It's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy fix. Some of those homes are, have been there for a very long time. And while Washoe County is, in my opinion, doing a lot, there are some things that we can certainly do to try to alleviate with respect to water and some sanitation facilities. So I'm in, I have no issue with that whatsoever. On a completely different note, I would like staff to come back, Mr. Smith, and talk about the issues that we're having in Spanish Springs on the Hall Road. I think that it's a, it's a time, it's a good time to just have that conversation about an acceleration lane from the Hall Road onto Pyramid Highway. You've got trucks that are laden with 100-plus thousand pounds of material, and they're... And I, I understand what's happening, they're, they're merging onto the highway without stopping. They need to keep their momentum, but it is creating a, a safety hazard for people traveling on Pyramid Highway. And I don't know what the easy solutions are, but I would like to just have a conversation about that acceleration lane. And then finally, I neglected to bring it up during our last meeting, although I, I know that people aren't going to really understand it right now. Research teams record the longest unmanned cross-country flight in Nevada with a drone that has to do with cloud seeding. While we're in a flood and we're in an epic year now, that's not going to be forever. We will move into another drought at some point, and I just wanted to acknowledge DRI for how much they're doing in drones and in cloud seeding, and trying to give us some stability in our region. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. All right. At this time, first and foremost, we have some, before I get started into my comments, I want to acknowledge some guests that we have with us today. We have some young, bright minds from Reno High School with us, joining us. Would Alan, Taylor, and Eric, would you stand up and wave for everybody? They're joining us this morning. They're joining us this morning from Reno High School, from their government class. Their, part of their civic duties and civic learning is to come and participate in meetings like this and, and see how processes happen within local government. And so thank you for being with us this morning. It's, it's an important process, and hopefully you'll grow up to be leaders as, Commissioner Jung says, sit in these seats in years to come. So thank you for being here. First and foremost, I want to talk about the Flood Board seat. Commissioner Herman, I'd asked for staff that we change her seat. We, we did give that to her, my seat to her, at the early January meetings. She has continuing conflicts with that. I think I'll take that board seat back. So I'd like to make an agenda item to make that, to make that change, Mr. Manager, at a later meeting. One thing I'd like to point out, Washoe County will be making their legislation, their presentation to the Assembly Government Affairs Committee on March 7th at 8:30 a.m. at Carson City in the Legislative Building. It's open, it's an open meeting to anybody. It's in room 3143 on the third floor of the Legislative Building. So if you want to come and participate in that meeting and see what our interactions are going to be with the legislature this coming year during legislative session, that would be a good opportunity for you to do and participate in that. Currently, our manager, John Slaughter, our Assistant County Manager, Kevin Schiller, are in DC at the National Association of Counties Conference. They are, they received the Crossroads, one of the programs, Assistant County Manager was his nexus. one of the programs, Assistant County Manager was his nexus. He received a national award for Health and Human Services in that, that program. So, I want to acknowledge him and all of the hard work that our, our Human Services Department has done over the years to continue to stand that, and this Commission, to stand that program up and continue to allow that program to grow. Well, the Sheriff's Office is here. I want to have staff look into, I've had a numerous amount of calls continuously about Andrew Lane in Steamboat Valley in regards to speeding. They, they have reached out to Senator Kikeffer, who has also called me a number of times in regards to speeding and different challenges they have, from Rhodes Road all the way around to Andrew Lane, individual speeding, young kids out there late at night racing around in that area because it is a off dirt, you know, a kind of dark rural road. So, residents would like some, some relief from that. I'm also gonna be working with Commissioner Lawrence Weekly from Clark County. We are going to be working on a Teen Bullying and Cyber Violence Initiative. Commissioner Weekly is part of the Steering Committee, National Steering Committee for teen bullying and cyber violence. He, he sits on a number of legislative panels in Washington DC nationally. And he is looking for me to join forces with him to bring students from Washoe County and Clark County and rural areas to Legislature in the next, in the coming months to address Legislature and the, the Assembly and the Senate in an open forum in, in regards to teen bullying. So, if you have interest in that, please contact me and we will get you the information for that. And last but not least, and there's currently some legislation being considered at the Legislative Building. It's in regards to services to Washoe Valley and, and more specifically, the Southern Washoe Valley residents. I know we have challenges throughout the county in regards to flooding and, and these events that we have seen. These are very unique events to our area. We are learning right along with all of the residents. And not to shorten the challenges that everybody is having, but these, these are, these are challenging times. And we at the county are not trying to not acknowledge your issues or, or disengage from you. We just simply sometimes don't always have all the answers. And this is a unique, this is a unique situation that we're occurring right now. And so, I want to look at, at direct staff that we look at services to Washoe Valley residents. You know, with the recent flooding, there's been challenges to damages to roads, ditches. I've asked for this before in regards to ditch maintenance, where we are with ditch maintenance and what we're going to do, what our plan is going forward, and how we're going to address some of these issues so that we can have a more proactive plan going into the future and not be as retroactive as we have been with this storm and trying to chase our tail, so to speak. So, I would look that staff kind of get with, we start looking at a countywide initiative to address some of these issues. So, at that time, is there anything else? Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had mentioned earlier that I thought the removal of C-Tax was Sun Valley. I'm sorry, it's Lemon Valley. We received a notice from the Department of Taxation and it is intending for the Department of Taxation to review, approve, and, and/or adopt the consideration to remove the Enterprise District classification for Lemon Valley Underground Water Basin. And, and the note, the footnote on this says, "This will remove Lemon Valley from the current distribution of C-Tax." And I would like to know, I would, I would like a presentation as to how that impacts Lemon Valley and how it impacts Washoe County. So, and I will pass this on to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, Commissioner Burke Bigler. All right. Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just heard back from Tamwa. We, Tamwa does not have a potable water truck. So, what we need to do is, we need to look into seeing what the need is and, and if there is a genuine need, the one that was used in Sutcliffe was actually, belongs to Lyon County.
That's right.
So, so, yeah, so, if, if indeed there is a need, sadly Tamwa does not have one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. All right. At this time, seeing no more additions, going once, twice, third, closed. Okay. We are closing item four. Mr. Manager, we are on to consent.
Chair, that takes us to our consent agenda. Items 5A through 5J, two.
All right. Thank you. At this time, is there any items that the Commissioners would like to have removed at this? Seeing none?
Move approval, consent.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment?
We had Kathy Brandhorse signed in, but she's absent from the room right now. So, you have none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Burke Bigler, second from Commissioner Hartong. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Let the record show that Commissioner Herman is not present for that vote. Yeah, she's already off the, I guess. So, at this time, we are to our presentations for the day. Our first appearance would be from Mr. Chris Askin, President and CEO of Community Foundation of Western Nevada. Mr. Askin, you're going to be giving us a presentation on Caregiver Support Initiative.
Yes. Thank you so much for having the Community Foundation here today.
Mr. Askin, and just as, just for a point of reference, we have 10 minutes for your presentation today.
Okay. We'll keep it within that.
Thank you.
So, the Community Foundation of Western Nevada now is 19 years old. Last year, we distributed about $6 million in grants and scholarships. We've distributed now $100 million in our history here. And we had a terrific year of giving last year in Washoe County. Our, our donors contributed $21 million last year to the foundation. We also have about $130 million in bequest arrangements that we know of. In other words, your community foundation is here to stay. It's only gonna get bigger, more engaged in the community and be able to help more in helping to address some of our community's issues. We have about 92 million in assets and all of the contributions that we receive 100% are private contributions from hundreds of different donors and families. As our capacity has grown, about four years ago, we got more involved in community leadership activities. Some of these we actually started many years ago. And so, I'm gonna mention a couple and then we really wanted to highlight today our, our caregiver initiative. So, we have been working with United Way on helping build capacity of nonprofit organizations in the community and have had an educational class going for nonprofits to be able to do a better job at what they do best. We have had over 1,000 local residents now participate in our estate pining classes. And very importantly, we've been participating in the conversation regarding the need for housing. I imagine many of you are familiar with the Housing Forum that was conducted about a month ago, and there's a second meeting coming up on March 8th. We think that this approach now that is being taken with the support of the Enterprise Group out of Portland is very good. Unfortunately, with a conversation like this, you have dozens of people participating in the conversation when the reality is, we have hundreds of stakeholders in Northern Nevada who, whose engagement in the need for and the development of housing for the people moving here has never been stronger. Therefore, we have decided that we're going to do a Housing Forum. You're all being invited to that. You should receive invitations hopefully by the first part of next week. It's gonna be on April 13th at the Reno High School Theater. We'll move to a larger venue if we need to. But we're including in that conversation all of our developers, apartment owners, other key stakeholders who really need to know what's happening with the forum work and to be able to help participate. Right now, the invite list is over 2,000, so we're casting the net wide. And we'd really like to see the community be able to come together on a housing effort that has a lot of power to it. You may be familiar with the, the work we began with youth homelessness four years ago. We're very excited to see the Eddie House continue to exist and, and for conversations to now be, being held about housing some of our youth who are essentially on the street. They're more targets than they are adults at this point. And then last year, through, through a proposal from Grady Tarbutton, you may recall Grady, our retired Director of Senior Services here. He had the idea that we need to help connect caregivers in our community with resources. Through a survey that Washoe County had conducted under Grady's watch, you'd identified 8,200 seniors who were caring for other people in their homes unpaid in Washoe County. This is a very, very large number. And it's something we can all connect with. You may have been a caregiver and you may also be cared for someday. This is something that's very personal to all of us. So, we've been working very hard through a committee that was convened, engage, engaging a number of different professionals in the community and residents in the, in the community and primarily led by caregivers themselves. And so, I'm very pleased to introduce our Director of Community Leadership, Nick Cheeker, who has been overseeing this convening process. And he'll talk a little bit about what we found and some of the solutions we'll be implementing this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow county Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. So, as Chris had mentioned, our Caregiver Support Initiative, it came from Mr. Grady Tarbutton. And one of the things that he had noted during his tenure with the county is that while there is a lot of excellent support and resources for services related to seniors, there's not been enough emphasis placed on the needs of actual caregivers. So, early on, when we were developing the initiative, we actually met with several people from the county to help with the, the core planning of that. And that included Kevin Schiller and Leslie Williams, who was working with Washoe County Senior Services at the time. And I'll provide some background information on really how we operate our initiatives. So, for us, our most important stakeholders are those who are directly affected by the issues. So, in this case, it would be family caregivers themselves. So, rather than assemble experts in a room and identify, okay, these are what we think the, the needs actually are, we wanted to first hear from as many caregivers as we could. There's a lot of value in hearing from the people who are in the trenches of caregiving. And during the fall of 2016, we held two public convenings. And with those two meetings we had, we heard from about 90 different caregivers, current and past caregivers, along with representatives from different nonprofits, government agencies, for-profit businesses related to senior care. And we wanted to see what were some of their top concerns, what needs emerged as priorities. And the most important need that came about was access to information and knowledge of community resources. We heard time and time again that there is not enough decent information on where to go to receive help and that while there have been a lot of different types of resource guides and community directories, there really hasn't been one that's truly comprehensive. And aside from the issue of making sure that it contains all the community resources, another big issue related to that is with making sure that their resources are accurate and up to date. So, with our model, we wanted to take action based on what the, the needs were. And so, we are actually partnering with the Sanford Center for Aging at the University, along with the Savant Medical Library, in developing a comprehensive resource guide that's geared towards caregivers to seniors. So, oftentimes, the caregivers themselves are also seniors, but there are cases where they may not be seniors if they're, say, for example, caring for an aging mother or father. So, the resource guide is expected to be complete within the next few months. And we've already done our initial data collection, compiling information from all the different resource guides that are out there. And as I alluded to, there is lots of good information, but it's in various pockets and it hasn't been all compiled together. So, that's really our first step. And the second step with our Caregiver Support Initiative is to develop a caregiver manual or a caregiver guidebook. And this is basically designed for, let's say, for example, you have to pick up an aging mother from a hospital and you're speaking to the discharge planner, and all of a sudden you find out that you have to now be a 24/7 caregiver. Maybe you're working, there are lots of questions with that. How can I manage this new responsibility? And we found that there really aren't resources that are given out to new caregivers. So, we're creating a caregiver guidebook. This wouldn't be a directory of all the community resources. There's several hundred resources in the area, so it's too much to include in a paper format. But this would be more information on how to be a caregiver, what are some caregiving tips, how can I find out about respite care, how do I make home modifications, things like that, and how do I deal with caregiver burnout, for example. And the plan with this guidebook is that we will distribute it to all the area hospitals for the discharge planners. We've reached out to the social work departments and the discharge planners as well. And they said that there is definitely a need for, and they would gladly supply it to new caregivers. So, those are our two main action items right now, is making sure that people are aware of the community resources, taking advantage of the work that's already been done, but really centralizing it, and then also providing that instruction of how to be a new caregiver. Oftentimes, caregivers are thrown into this situation unexpectedly. So, hopefully with these items, we'll be able to provide more relief. Our initiatives do expand over time and the needs could change. So, our focus now is on a smaller pocket. And then, once that is complete, we can see where the initiative moves forward. So, that's the conclusion of my segment, but I, I'm open to any questions you may have about our Caregiver Support Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeker. And thank you, Mr. Askin, for your presentation today. Is there any questions from the Board at this time? Great job. Thank you so much for coming today and give us, and briefing us on that information. We, we really appreciate all the hard work that you have put into the community. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for having us here.
Thank you. Have a great day. At this time, I know we have our next presentation up. Ms. Kelly, I know you're here to do that presentation on the Nevada Tahoe District, Conservation District. But what I'd like to do, we do have some members in the audience. If we can move the emergency item forward and take the emergency item now, Mr. Liparelli, would that be possible, potential? Okay. So, let's take, we're gonna take that emergency item to ratify the Declaration of Emergency signed by the County Manager at this time. So, and I, and please, Madam Clerk, will you let the record show that Commissioner Hartong has left the meeting? He, he had an unavoidable, important meeting he had to attend to. So, he will be back hopefully shortly, but we'll take this item now.
Thank you very much.
All right, Chair. This item is a recommendation to ratify the Declaration of a State of Emergency declared by the Washoe County Manager on Thursday, February 23rd, 2017.
All right. We have a, we have an emergency declaration signed by the manager. Commissioner, I have Commissioner Burke Bigler has a motion from Burke Bigler?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Public comment, but.
Yeah.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Jung. Do we have public com-, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Liparelli.
Mr. Chair, emergency items like these are permitted when there's natural disaster-type events. This qualifies. The County Manager wanted the Board to have the earliest opportunity that it could to ratify his action taken in the absence of a, of a quorum of the Board. This item will come back again on a later agenda where it's listed as an action item. So, it's a sort of a triple redundancy deal, but the whole point is, there are extraordinary powers that are available to people in the, in emergency declaration setting in the Board. And the public needs the safeguards of checking off on those declarations when they happen.
Thank you, Mr. Liparelli. Any public comment?
No, sir.
I have no public comment signed in. I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Let the record show that Commissioner Hartong and Commissioner Herman are being absent. Commissioner Jung.
Mr. Liparelli or Mr. Interim Manager or Acting Manager? When will we know when the Governor has said yes, we, we'll, we'll get assistance or no? Do you have, is there a
I'm not sure of a timeline right now, but we are in contact with the State on a, almost every couple of hours. I know our emergency manager, Aaron Kinison, has been in, in contact with them. So, we are, we are following up as needed.
And if staff could let us know if there's anything that we can do behind the scenes to lobby, we'd be happy to do it as well. So, we get a sooner rather than later answer.
We will certainly do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Okay. So, we've taken care of our emergency item now. And we are on to our item seven, appearance by Ms. Megan Kelly, District Manager for Nevada Tahoe Conservation District. She's gonna give us a presentation today on Nevada Tahoe Conservation District's contributions to Washoe County. Ms. Kelly, nice to see you again.
Oh, thank you. Good morning. My name is Megan Kelly. I'm the District Manager and the Senior Staff Engineer, I guess really the Senior Project Engineer now, for the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District. I'm just here today to tell you about what we've done with Washoe County in the past five years and to potentially lobby you to include us as a budget item in, in future budgets. So...
Excuse me, Ms. Kelly, you have a presentation?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Staff's loading it right now.
Okay. It's up on the big screen.
It's up there. Oh, we just can't see it.
Okay. So, to tell you a little bit about Nevada Tahoe Conservation District, we are one of 3,000 conservation districts nationwide and we're continued, considered to be local government, but we're technically a subdivision of the state of Nevada, although we receive no state funding at all. We are over 99% grant-funded. We work on conservation issues throughout the Lake Tahoe Basin, serving Washoe County, Douglas County, and the Carson City rural area. Douglas County, and the Carson City rural area. We have appointed and elected board members, and two are from Washoe County Incline Village specifically. And we have board meetings monthly, much like this commission does. We, our focus has been on restoration and water quality improvement at Lake Tahoe, which we know the Lake Tahoe's clarity is extremely important. And Washoe County is tasked with meeting the Lake Tahoe TMDL with somewhat of an unknown obligation into the future for stormwater treatment. And we have a team of experts in both science and engineering. One of our most successful projects to date was the Rosewood Creek Restoration in Incline Village, which was mostly on private property, but also on Washoe County right-of-way and some state land property. We restored over two thousand linear feet of a highly erodible stream channel that was delivering, they were saying, up to ten thousand cubic yards of sediment into Lake Tahoe in the next twenty-five years. So, we were able to stabilize it, as you can see the eroding picture on the top, and then the restored creek down low. We were able to replace deteriorating county infrastructure, improve riparian health and fire safety. And because of this project, we also received an award from TRPA called the Best in Basin Award. We were able to use our staff to write grants and receive over two-point-six million dollars in federal and state funding to implement this project with a small contribution from the TRPA mitigation funds that Washoe County provides of under fifty thousand dollars to replace, you know, deteriorating county infrastructure. And we found this to be one of our most beautiful projects, and many people are requesting tours annually. Another project we installed with the county was an innovative public rain garden project, which I think we're doing more of these down in Reno, but we aren't specifically, but the county is. But this was the first public rain garden project in Lake Tahoe, where we installed small roadside infiltration features in the county right-of-way to capture and treat stormwater. This also received a Best in Basin Award. And because of this project, NDOT also asked us to do a similar project along Highway twenty-eight in Incline Village. And we installed six rain gardens in two thousand fourteen for NDOT. And we just recently received three hundred thousand dollars in funding from the state and the federal government to install another type of these projects in conjunction with Washoe County. Finally, we helped Washoe County meet their Tahoe TMDL goals by a number of things. We helped them, we helped them map all of their stormwater assets in GIS so that they have a database knowing what they have in the ground already. We helped them create their stormwater load reduction plan, which was necessitated by NDEP, the regulatory agency, kind of setting the goals for Washoe County on how they're going to meet the Tahoe TMDL. We helped them with, you know, different models so that they can show what, how they're meeting the TMDL. And we helped them do their yearly monitoring through the rapid assessment methods, the Road RAM and the BMP RAM. I guess one more thing about the TMDL is, I know, working with Washoe County, this is one of these things where it's a constantly almost changing regulation at this point, and it's really hard to put a cost on that. It's like costs seem to almost increase every year, because the more assets you register, the more monitoring you have to do. And so, I know that in talking to, talking to Dwayne Smith and your staff, it's one of those reoccurring costs that is likely to increase each year. So, our funding history with Washoe County, we were receiving twenty-five thousand dollars in annual support, but in two thousand nine, with the economic downturn, we haven't received any general fund assistance since then. Meanwhile, we've helped the county implement millions of dollars of projects. Our general fund supports grant writing, administrative costs, training, those reoccurring costs like assistance with the Tahoe TMDL. And we also receive annual general fund support from both Douglas County and Carson City. We receive twenty-five thousand dollars annually from Douglas County and a varying amount from Carson City Rural District. So, what I'm asking today, to be short and sweet, is that we, that you consider when you're looking at your budget, to reinstate Washoe County general fund assistance to the two thousand two to two thousand nine levels, approximately thirty-one thousand dollars, and that it's made an annual budget line item effective for the upcoming fiscal year. And I saw today with all of these different speakers that there are many budget needs in the county, but as our history shows, we can leverage small investments into projects that cost ten to twenty times more to implement. Just recently, I expended eight thousand dollars in general fund time to obtain over three hundred thousand dollars in grant funding to implement a new project in Washoe County that will treat stormwater and help with lake clarity. So, I ask you to consider, when you're looking at the budget, if there could be a line item for the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District. Thank you for your time and consideration, and at this point, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, at this time. We'll bring it back to the board. Do you have any questions, commissioners?
No, I don't have any questions. I actually spent some time talking with a number of people about this issue. I would like a presentation from staff to the board as we move into budget, and they can, staff can talk from their perspective on it. So, obviously, we, you do understand, we can't make a decision on this today, but I would like a presentation from staff, so if we could get that on the agenda at a future meeting. And thank you very much for coming. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
I got, I will tell you, I had the, I've got a tour, and so I had the opportunity to see the rain garden and also see the stream restoration. It really, truly is beautiful. I saw it last summer. It's very gorgeous.
All right. All right. At that time, this brings us to our normal agenda. Madam Vice Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Madam Vice Chair, would you like to put a block vote together?
I would be happy to put a block vote together. I propose make a motion that we put number eight, nine, ten, and eleven in a block vote. And I would like to make a point to say that number eight, the funding here, the three hundred and forty-nine thousand in funding to, to work on the Bowers Mansion Pool Maintenance Building, is a donation from the William Pennington Foundation. So, it's always great to make sure we give them credit, because they're so wonderful to work with us all the time. But I would move to put those in a block vote.
Wonderful. So, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Manager, would you like to read those for us?
I will. So, item number eight is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for the Bowers Mansion Pool Mechanical Building Project. Staff recommends California commercial pools in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Item number nine is approve an interstate, intrastate, interlocal contract between the state of Nevada, acting through the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Welfare and Supportive Services, and Washoe County District Attorney, Child Support Division, for the period of July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Four million four hundred eighty-two thousand two hundred two dollars for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, four million five hundred seventy-one, five hundred forty-six dollars for fiscal year nineteen, four million six hundred sixty-two thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars for fiscal year twenty, and four million seven hundred fifty-five thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars for fiscal year twenty-one. And for the purpose of providing, oh, sorry, for the purpose of providing child support establishment and enforcement services in Washoe County on cases that do not involve state-administered public assistance to one of the parents. Item number ten is acknowledgement of publication of notice of intent to augment budgets and approval of the attached resolution to augment the general fund budget in the amount of one million ninety-six thousand two hundred eleven dollars, and approve the use of general fund carryover to cover previously approved unbudgeted expenditures for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and direct the comptroller to make the appropriate budget adjustments. Net impact of the county budget is zero. And finally, item number eleven is a possible action to initiate an amendment to Washoe County Code, Chapter one-ten Development Code, Article five-oh-five Sign Regulations, Section five-oh-five-point-three-zero Electronic Messaging Display Signs, in order to provide for exceptions for certain electronic message display placement requirements specifically for governmental entities when the EMD promotes the general welfare of the public, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign the initiation resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on these items?
No, sir.
All right. We see no public comment. I have a motion by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Going to jump around a little bit more here today. Since we've got item twelve, which is discussion, discussion and direction to staff for legislation, I'm going to move twelve, and we're going to open the public hearing and start taking the public hearings now and move the legislation to the end. So, open the public hearing at this time, and we're going to take item, agenda item thirteen.
Item thirteen is a public hearing, second reading and possible action to adopt an ordinance amending Washoe County Code at Chapter one-ten.
Thank you. Adieu. Are you ready for your second reading?
Madam Clerk, yes, please.
Okay. This will be ordinance number one-five-nine-one. An ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter one-ten Development Code within Article three-twenty-four Communication Facilities at Section one-one-zero-point-three-two-four-point-five-zero-E, to include the general rural agricultural regulatory zone among the regulatory zones where wireless communication facility monopole antennas are allowed with a special use permit. To clarify that all new monopole antennas require the approval of a special use permit, and to replace the master plan designations of rural residential, suburban residential, and urban residential with the corresponding regulatory zones of high-density rural, HDR, medium-density rural, MDR, low-density rural, LDR, low-density suburban, LDS, medium-density suburban, MDS, high-density suburban, HDS, low-density urban, LDU, medium-density urban, MDU, and high-density urban, HDU. And this was previously issued Bill number one-seven-seven-six.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Open and bring it back to the board at this time.
Move approval.
Ordinance fifteen-ninety-one.
Yeah, ordinance fifteen-ninety-one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
I have no one signed in, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I apologize. So, that motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Hartung and Herman being absent. All right. We are on to item fourteen. Mr. Manager.
Item fourteen is a second reading and possible action to adopt an ordinance approving an amended and restated development agreement for Silver Hills.
Madam Clerk.
This will be ordinance number one-five-nine-two. An ordinance approving and amended and restated development agreement, Silver Hills, amending and restating a development agreement originally approved in two thousand twelve, development agreement case number DA zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-one. Ordinance number one-four-eight-four regarding the Silver Hills subdivision approved in two thousand eleven as tentative map, TM zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-one. This restated agreement, case number AC sixteen-dash-zero-zero-five, extends the deadline for filing the next in a series of final subdivision maps to February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. The project includes a total of four parcels. The subject parcels are located east and west of Red Rock Road, north of Longhore Road. The parcels will total approximately seven hundred and eighty acres plus or minus and have a low-density suburban regulatory zone. The parcels are located within the North Valleys Area Plan and are situated in portions of Sections twenty-three and twenty-four, Township Twenty-One North, Range Eighteen East, MDM, Washoe County, Nevada, APNs zero-eight-six-two-zero-three-zero-five, zero-eight-six-two-two-three-three-one, zero-eight-seven-three-nine-zero-one-zero, zero-eight-seven-three-nine-zero-one-three. And this was previously Bill number one-seven-seven-five.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a public comment at this time?
Yes, we do. I don't know if the gentleman's still here.
He is.
Michael Welling?
Yep, he's here.
Okay, Mr. Welling?
Good afternoon, Mr. Welling. Still, good morning.
We're still on morning. It's, we've sorted it up a little bit.
Yeah.
So, good morning. I'm here to talk about Silver Hills development and some concerns that I do have living in Silver Knolls. And I've stated these previously, but I wanted them on the record again today. There's a natural catch basin that is going to be built off the back corner of my property. I have some concerns about the wall portion of it that's going to be built that will be approximately six to eight feet tall, which towers over the neighbor's four-foot fence that's below it. I'm also concerned about the water that comes off of the hill without any, any development there at this time. There's, this year has been a creek that has run down and run through numerous properties, so I have concern about that. The other thing is, is upon the building of the catch basin, I'm concerned about the upkeep of it and also the possibility for mosquitoes. We live in an area that's predominantly dotted with agriculture things, which are horses and, and dogs and cats, and we do have some cattle there. And I'd be concerned about the West Nile. Some of us have spent quite a bit of time and energy to maintain our livestock, and in that, it'd be terrible to lose animals, especially our children's animals, with regard to that. And lastly, the thing that, that I'm passionate about there is to keep the integrity of the Silver Knolls neighborhood, which is one-third acre smallest parcels there, and to, I understand that, that there's a lot of land there, and a lot of it's going to be taken by streets and by, by sidewalk and/or culverts and by catch basin. So, I understand the density that is projected on this, and I would like to just encourage that, that as the builder goes forward, that some of that integrity for the neighborhood that we live in is maintained. I have spoken with, with Lifestyle Homes, with Mr. Lesnar both, and today, and Kitty Jung and Ms. Farazza with regards to that, and we are going to meet in the future. But I appreciate your time to hear my concerns and Lifestyle Homes, their concern and willingness to discuss this. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Welling. Madam Clerk.
That's all the public comment I had.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Jung?
Thank you. I'm willing to approve this today. And Mr. Liparelli, if you'd like to weigh in on this, I spoke with Mr. Welling this morning before our meeting started and explained to him this is really ministerial, it's just an extension, there's not a lot of bones on this plan yet. So, I don't have a problem with going ahead and approving this ordinance. And I also, when it comes to developers here, I mean, you're the luckiest man on the planet that Lifestyle Homes is who's developing next door to you, because Bobby Lucy, our chairman, has a real winner down south from San Diego, who's going to put in three hundred homes with, you know, no space, right?
With zero content.
And zero infrastructure. And good luck trying to get those people to meet with us and talk, right, Mr. Chairman? So, you see the developers are here, the representatives are here, they've met with Mr. Welling. I have every confidence that they will work with you. And you forgot to say one thing that I'll request for you, and then you guys can, you forgot to mention one thing that you really wanted, and that was a fire break. And you were hoping that they could work on that, because you're worried about the fires that have been out there in these microcell environments, which is, as you know, in that area as a developer, that's kind of a more weathered area. And he was just asking if you could just take some equipment out there and work on this fire break that's concerning him. And you guys can talk more about that, but I just didn't want you to forget all the points that you made. So, I'm happy to approve this ordinance.
Great.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Mr. County Manager, item fifteen.
Thank you. Item fifteen is a hearing and second reading to adopt an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter five.
All right, Madam Clerk.
This will be ordinance one-five-nine-three. An ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter five, Administration and Personnel at Section five-point-two-six-eight by amending certain provisions relating to semi-annual accrual of personal leave and exclusion of sick leave due to bereavement from the calculation of personal leave accrual. And this was previously issued Bill number one-seven-seven-seven.
All right. Any public comment at this time, Madam Clerk?
No, we have none.
All right. Looking for a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed.
Oh, aye, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Burke Bigler. A motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Herman and Commissioner Hartung being absent. All right. At this time, we will take, go back and take item twelve at this time, which is Agenda item twelve, Discussion and Direction to Staff Regarding Legislation and Legislative Issues. Mr. Manager.
Chair, I do know that you've received some information from the legislative team, a written report there, and if you need clarification on any of those items... written report there, and if you need clarification on any of those items or have anything to discuss, I can get Mr. Rogers down here to discuss this item. But I know you've received the report for this month's meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Are there any, is there any comments or anything from the board that needs to be added to in regards to current legislation? All right, Commissioner Jung.
Mine's just a compliment. Getting good feedback on you two down at the legislature from my homeboys and girls that are Democrats. They really like you guys, and they think you're reasonable and nice. I'm like, yeah, they're not crazy. They're not Tea Party patriots. They are super-nice people doing good business for us. So, I just wanted to put that on the record. People are wildly impressed by you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, Commissioner Burke Bigler's legacy speaks for itself, but it does get back, and so, it's nice to, I know you wanna hear it, and I'd rather do it in public than behind the scenes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
You're welcome. Thank you for all your hard work.
I appreciate it. Yes, Commissioner Burke Bigler and I have been working diligently down there, and it's great to work with her. She is a wealth of information around that building and knows the ins and outs of that building. And it can be a very daunting place at times and, and very interesting, but it is good work, you know, and I was having this discussion with Judge Flanagan, Chief Judge Flanagan yesterday. You know, the reason we do the work that we do is selfless work, and Commissioner Burke Bigler and I really do believe in the issues of the county and protecting and preservation of the county. So, and we wanna thank staff, all the staff that are boots on the floor in the legislative field, building, and also here in the office that continuously update us and give us the information. It's been an interesting legislative session so far, but a very productive one, I feel. So, hopefully, we will get some, we're looking into some good resolution towards the end of the session. So, we'll continue to work for you and continue pushing out those issues. So, thank you very much, Commissioner Jung, for your very kind comments. It's very nice. All right, since there isn't any direction at this time.
Public comment.
Yes, do we have public comment?
We do, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Joanna Schumacher.
Welcome back, Ms. Schumacher.
Thank you. For the record, Joanna Schumacher, gifted minds with too little time. Before I talk about the legislative stuff, I'd like to direct a little attention to Commissioner Jung. I run a bipartisan organization who have both Democrats and what you would call Tea Party patriots who are involved in that. And your implication that they might be crazy is not something good, so please, please don't do that.
Ms. Schumacher, if you could, could you address the board as a whole, please?
You bet.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Commissioner, I, sorry, Mr. Chair, I would respectfully ask that those comments not come from our elected officials.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the legislation. Our organization has been looking at the fluoridation issue, and we know that this issue is directed specifically at Washoe County. Clark County is already fluoridating their water, and they are trying to enforce fluoridation onto Washoe County. If you look at the regulations, it's specifically directed to Washoe County. The fluoridation issue has multiple sides. Some of those Tea Party patriots are definitely objecting to the cost that it would take because you have runoff that goes into the storm drains. And that water goes directly into the river, which is a protected resource, and therefore, we would be charged with cleaning up that protected resource of the fluoride that would be put in there. But mainly, and this would include our Democratic friends in our group, they are worried about forced medication. And if you look at any fluoride toothpaste, if you or your child swallows the toothpaste, you're directed to go to poison control. Okay? You're asking for people to have a medication, something that if they ingest too much of it, they have to go to poison control, and that's going to be in the water? How do you regulate that? You know, how do you know if your child is getting too much of the fluoridated water or not? How do you know if any of us are getting too much of the fluoridated water? It simply doesn't make sense, and if we're going to use that kind of money and resources, it should be directed at assisting low-income people with dental programs. It should not be put into fluoride. It just doesn't make any sense. So, we would respectfully ask the commission to go against this fluoride bill on our behalf as the whole county, because I think it's important that people have a choice when it comes to medications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher.
Juanita Cox.
Juanita Cox, for the record, representing citizens in action. I, too, had brought up earlier about the fluoridation bill. I am concerned about, for the people of Washoe and, and other probably counties, because the threshold is being lowered to 100,000. I won't reiterate the Ms. Schumacher's same things, but, and nor mine earlier, but fluoridation is, will affect the county's costs without reason. They can use that money like Ms. Schumacher said. A better way is to take care of our poorer children or people like myself that has fluorosis caused by overfluoridation. Mine was a natural occurring, and so, I'm pretty hot on overfluoridation. Also, I think you should look at the wage increase to 15, the mandatory wage increase, and I think you should consider the ramifications of commerce in Washoe about that. Yesterday morning on Good Morning America and other articles on the internet, there was a big piece about how Wendy's, the fast-food chain, was going automated, robotic. Others, McDonald's indicated that same thing, and other fast-food restaurants. These are your $15 minimum wage-type entry-level people, and what this is doing is causing business to lower those people, I'm sorry, those jobs, that you're gonna lose more jobs by increasing a mandatory wage increase. So, you've gotta consider all of it and, and the jobs of these entry-level people, that that is much of a concern and should be to all of us. I know I have rejected in another restaurant the little kiosk kind of a thing, because I always say, I wanna have and talk to a real person and not just push buttons. I want to have the people to have a job, and, and so, we've gotta consider all of these things that we're thinking about at the legislature. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Cox.
That's all the public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. At this time, I think staff got plenty of direction on those, on that, there's no need to take action on that today. So, we will not take action and move on to our final public comment.
All right, that'll take us to item 16, public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
I have no one signed in, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Anything, commissioner announcements? Commissioner Burke Bigler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I received an email from Barbara Pearlman Wyman, who is a resident of Incline Village and sits on the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District Board. She's an elected member to the Conservation Board, and she provided a rather lengthy email that she would like to have put into the record, and I've asked the county clerk to please put it into the record today, so it will be reflected to everybody.
Thank you. Will do, Mr. Madam.
Commissioner Jung, do you have anything to add at this time? I just have a couple of things. One, you know, I know I talked about the cyberbullying initiative, but I would ask, I would make a request for the two-hour rule for my usage of staff time to do that cyberbullying initiative with Clark County. So, if we could put that on agenda for approval for me to utilize two-hour staff time for that. And then, I did get a notification during the meeting, this is for all my Steamboat Valley residents that are upset in regards to the potential of annexation and a master change plan amendment. That, that meeting, that item was on, scheduled to be heard tomorrow night, March 1st, at the Reno Planning Commission. That has been continued at this time, and would like to, City of Reno is reaching out to us supposedly to relook at the plan and have further discussions at this time. So, for all my residents in Steam Valley, Steamboat Valley, though that meeting has been continued at this time, that item has been continued, and we'll get more information to you in the future. All right, that being said, we are all done. We are adjourned, folks.
Good job.